There any changes or comments on the agenda?
Mayor Lacy?
Yes.
On business item. The date of that meeting needs to be changed from December 21st to December 20th.
Hoping you were going to set up the item A. Just in case, but thank you. That so we will note that they change. Any other comments on the? They entertain a motion?
I move that we accept the agenda as amended second.
Further discussion. For a second there, I'm sorry. One favor say I. Thank you all very much. Next item is consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments on consent agenda? I will point out, and we appreciate the time that these people put in on all of our advisory boards, but the appointing of Jan Johnson as a regular voting member for the rec advisory board. Thank you very much. And a quick note on the resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement. Item E in there.
Any questions, other questions, or any questions on that one?
I don't trustees. Great. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second, Jean. Half thousand more. Further discussion. All in favor say I.
Hi. Hi.
Host bring them. Public comment. We open the meeting for public comment. I remind everyone. You can, if you are attending in Zoom, that you can chime in on the chat, raise your hand. Also, if you are on your phone, you can press star nine and we will look for you and give you your time to speak. I'm sorry, Paula. I know it's kind of, it was kind of cruising. Anything on there?
Nope.
Nothing at all. Okay. Do you see anything, Philip?
I do not.
Do not. Okay. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, staff reports. I'm administrator.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us. Glad the hybrid solution is still working here. So thanks for everybody for being patient with all of that. My memo is on page 70 of your packets. I'll just hit a few highlights. One, I just found out today that our fourth quarter intergovernmental meeting, which I had listed here to potentially happen in December, will not take place in December. Conflict of schedules for the county, so they will be the host, the county government will be the host. So they'll be looking at early 2022 for that meeting. I think given kind of the what's going on with COVID right now in the county, that's probably good to buy a little bit of time anyway. They're always very productive meetings. So for that one, we also are kind of lining up, you'll see going into 2022, some of our work sessions that we're going to be targeting. So looking at our water policies work session in February that we talked about last meeting, and then also taking a look at work session with the BV sanitation, which ties to our water, water plan. Let's see, really, really good update from, from our partners dealing with the wildfire mitigation efforts specifically up in our water, water source protection area, Cottonwood and, and North Cottonwood Creek. So a lot of good information there. A lot of that is private properties that they are, it takes a little bit more time, obviously, to to, to plan out with multiple property owners. So I appreciated that they provided the, the details there for you all. And they will plan on coming back to you all to provide updates around that and, and hopefully they'll be lining up another grant request to help with some of these mitigation efforts. So I think they will be here in that February, March timeframe next year. Another great update, we, I don't know if everyone is familiar with it, but C dot organizes organizes the state into different regions. And so we are part of the San Luis Valley region when it comes to C dot's planning areas. And so once a month or so, there are meetings in Alamosa. I sure did love last year when they were on Zoom. This year they're back in person. So it's a bit of a haul, but it's a really important meeting that we attend. And, and so what we've been able to do, starting in 2019, was starting to push our priorities along the highway. And that has resulted in the Baylor DePaul intersection on the highway, pushing and pushing and pushing on them. We did the traffic study, traffic counts all in that area as well as our Steel Drive Highway 24 intersection. So happy to see and happy to report out of the meeting this past week that they have put the Baylor DePaul project high on their priority list, and it has allocated funding from their budgets. And they plan to put that out for advertisement for construction in the beginning of 2023. And as the board may, board may remember, this year we did allocate some money from our street fund to partner with C dot on the design process. And we signed that IGA a little earlier this year. So that is moving along. I think the meat of that design effort and probably information going to the public will happen in 2022 so that they can get it moving in 23 to, to get it out for bid. Steel Drive, US 24 Greg Drive, that area is still listed as a high priority and did warrant a signal or a intersection improvement. It does not have funding yet, but C dot is expecting more funding in their budgets. And we'll be using this TPR group to prioritize what fits in to their, to their funding over the next few years. So we'll continue to, to work through that process for our area. Various other project updates, I'm not going to jump into any of those unless you have specific questions. Knowing that we've got some public hearings and things on the agenda, I'll stop there and see if you have any questions.
Now, there's been already been public hearing or public comment on both of those intersections.
C dot did have a public input process last year. That's right. They, they consider it one of their largest public input campaigns. And there was a lot of feedback from our community into, into that process. They called it their 10 year plan. Planning process. So yes.
So there's no, we won't see that in the future. It's already been, here it is. Now let's move forward with the project.
Yes, with the design of those projects. Yeah. So, so they collected feedback like areas are unsafe, or I've noticed pedestrians struggling to cross here, or you know, all those types of feedback. And then so they're incorporating that into the design.
And, and that was also done when we did the upgrade on the highway.
Yes.
Basically.
The access control plan and the highway improvements identified those areas as needing some attention. So.
Yes, lady.
So with Steel Drive, are we going to be negotiating with the railroad at the same, on the same schedule so that we can get hopefully another crossing across the railroad?
It, there's a lot in play around that because it also depends on the DOC on the other side. Our discussions with them have been cooperative that they would work with us to cross that property with a, with a street. I don't know if it'll line up exactly. But once we have an idea, when C dot is lining up their funding, then we can bring it back up to the railroad. We just don't want to start and stop that too many times. With the railroad, I think we've got it at a good holding pattern for now. The other thing that we can do is if, if we don't have all of that ready to go, the crossing, that is, that the intersection improvement can be designed in a way to expand into the crossing in the future. Because I think we're seeing so much activity coming off of Greg. Now with larger trucks in the factory about to open up that I think the safety concern and getting that improvement in is, is a high priority. And we don't want to lose out on that once they do get funding.
Thank you.
Parks was involved in that also, was it not? Parks and Wildlife?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, there's some big names in there that are going to have to all come together to get that steel extended. It's going to take a bit.
I do have a couple of things real quick that weren't in my memo that I want to just mention. On the water side, we have a, the rate study we talked about last time as kind of identifying as a logical next step from all the things going on with water. We did sign a contract today with Wright Water Engineering, who helped with our water master plan. So a lot of the data and the effort to go into that has been done with the master planning. So we're going to move right on into the rate study. So we're progressing with that. That is in the budget in our water fund and under our $25,000 limit. So we move forward with that. And staff has crafted a updated water strategy that, some information that will be forthcoming to you all to keep that conversation and thought process going as we kind of prepare for the February work session. But at any time between now and then, if there's a particular area of water that you want to pull onto the agenda and talk about, that's absolutely okay too. So kind of lining up for that February timeframe, something that's pressing. We can, we can add it to the agenda ahead of that time.
Yep. So that being said, if you have anything, contact Philip or myself and we'd be happy to bring it forward. Go ahead, Dave.
Do you see the water rate study being by February in that timeframe to fit into that conversation?
So are you on, online? I forget, I didn't remember the timeline.
Yeah. So, so they're going to get going on it, assuming we can get them the information that they need in time, you know, when they ask, they say, once they, once they get going, it should be about an eight week process for that draft. So it potentially could be in here for that February, we'll at least have a draft, we should by then.
Yeah. Perfect. Thank you.
So that will impact budget 2022.
In terms of the fee schedule?
No, the, for the, the funds dispersed to do the study.
We're pulling from this year's budget.
This year's budget. Okay. So that will be an amendment. Will be seen.
It's already in our.
Already. Thank you.
Yeah, we had money left over from the master plan and then we had professional fees already available in the line of mine. So unless the board wants to amend the budget, we didn't see a need to.
No, we're good. If, if Michelle doesn't say we need to then. She laughs. Speaking of, that being said, Michelle.
Thank you, Mayor. Trustees, my memo is on page 73 of the packet. It's the boring week of the month, so it's just the town expenditures. Carol and expenditures over 2000. I did want to point out that the next meeting, I will have all the September sales tax information in. And so I will be also bringing forward the third quarter financial status report. That's it for me. Any questions?
Any questions, trustees? Saving them all for budget. We go. Thank you, Michelle. Chief, are you with us?
I sure am. Can you hear me?
You're bad.
All right. Good evening. Thank you. Yeah, I just got back from a few days off, so it's pretty short and sweet report. I'd like to thank my sergeants Shane Garcia and Ben Adair for running the ship while I was taking a few days off. We had a Halloween parade for Avery Parsons Elementary last week, and that went really well. A big thank you to Public Works for getting the barricades out for us and for Chaffey County Fire for helping with the street closures. We also had a memorial for Officer Trevor Stazak on the 26th, which was last Monday, I believe. And I posted some pictures of that. We hope to have some video up on our Facebook page fairly soon. But it was really meaningful. A lot of the retired officers that worked with Trevor were able to attend, and I know that was very meaning, meaningful for them. And I'd just like to mention their names. Gary Puckett was there, Bobby McGeehan, Randy Hancock, and also Chief Tidwell, of course, was there. And also, it was nice, the tow truck driver who helped out that night 25 years ago was there and his wife, Jeanette Stevens with Dispatch was also there and helped us out. So that was really nice. Lastly, with the approach of Veterans Day, I just want to thank all the veterans in our community for defending our freedoms that we love and enjoy. And I want to recognize the veterans with the BVPD who are Sergeant Ben Adair, Officer Elijah Brito, and Cadet Chris Green. Thank you for your service. Thanks.
Thank you, Dean. Next up is Earl.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Our report is on page 77. I too will try to hit some highlights. I'm sorry, I write too much. Looking at my reports pretty long. So thank you for getting through it. Extremely busy here in town for everyone, especially at the rec department for programming. We got youth basketball in full swing, 185 participants, which is awesome. Age groups, adult basketball happening. These events occur, we have great relationships with BV schools and DPCA. Adult volleyball has started up at BV schools on Sundays, peak to peak. At DPCA. Ball soccer is wrapped up, huge year with that. There's some other big leagues for volleyball, both men's and women's. So it's been nothing but excitement in the programming side. We have had, you know, a few not scares on our end, but at the schools, lots of kids that are testing positive with COVID. So the conversation comes up, what are we doing in a BV rec? We're continuing following the county code of conduct. And of course, our programs are all voluntary. So kid is sick, we definitely want you to stay home. If you're nervous about being around other kids, then you can miss that practice, but recommending masks and keep people as system as possible. Not being directed by Chief County Public Health who endorse our activities. I'm also following the guidance of BV schools as well. So everything's going well on our end. We just want to make sure keeping great communication with our parents and staff members. Facility wise, lots of rentals coming in the door, a lot of last minute requests. It's been seeing really busy with that. Special events are getting more and more popular. I think Eugene have returning in her application almost a year in advance, which is amazing. So excited that someone actually listened.
I know you're busy.
Are out and hidden in the hopper and save the date. And you know, Ben continues to bring feedback from our rec advisory boards, our team, our team to other departments about other subject matters around special events. To keep those conversations going and provide good input. Lots of events still occurring. You'll see the Turkey Try happening this Thanksgiving, starting in South Main, around the River Park trails and across the bridge on the bridge, bridge, and then also the Christmas opening on December 4th. Then several peaceful assemblies will occur. Those are events that don't meet our special event criteria, but we want to make sure we know what's happening in our town. So on my end, as you heard tonight, lots of grant writing. We'll find out about Land Water Conservation Fund in June. We'll find out from CPW in March if we've been, those grants that we have requested. In the last week, a lot of our team members in town has spent time with the NES group. They're the folks that are helping out with the master planning at the existing rodeo grounds and Chicago Ranch Properties. We've had great community involvement. We got a lot of the stakeholders to the table, one on one with NES. And then a public input meeting here, and then they've also just launched a survey. It's on our new website that Joseph put together, the myBV website. Hopefully everyone's seen that and registered, win prizes. But our survey, I think, got 100 responses in the first weekend. Accurate?
We're up to 205.
Wow. Was it 100 on Monday or?
I think we had a hun, yeah, 100 on Monday morning.
Wow. Yeah, people are excited and engaged in that new portal. It's just really inviting. So thanks for getting that together. So at the last meeting, when I was reporting from my home office, we spoke of the restructuring, potential restructuring of the rec department. That's still going really well. In the packet, I laid out the different summaries of each job description. So in my report, people can ask me questions. So still taking steps to achieve our goals there. And then the capital project lists, I'm not going to reiterate what we talked about tonight, but lots of projects and do want to make you too nervous for several of these are multi-year projects. We won't have to accomplish them all in 2022. The Landing Water Conservation Fund, that's a three year, three and a half year funding source. Those are all listed in your bracket. All the details. And then if you haven't seen or heard already, phase one is done and it's fenced off. So people can't drive on it and do donuts in our new ball facility. Yeah, just big thanks to ACA and Miles Construction. Companies went above and beyond to work with our town to make things happen. Did budgeting for that. So happy to answer any questions tonight on the phone. Email.
Email.
On the door.
Any questions? Mayor, just real quick to reiterate, I mean, Earl does a great job highlighting all of the partnerships to get all these things done. I mean, you heard the grant writing support. We're getting things like that, but we will be bringing some thank you letters for the mayor to sign on some of this stuff too. So to make sure people are recognized for, for their efforts and donations.
History has shown well for this town. That's all I can say. A lot of people have put forward a lot of effort to make things happen here. Is that it, Earl?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Next is Fire Chief Bertram.
Good evening, everybody. Go through this fairly quickly. I guess one of the big things is I just realized that we're about six months in from the IGA. From our perspective, everything seems to be going well. If anybody does have any questions, concerns at any point, my email is at the bottom of this and we can discuss them. Is, or October was fire prevention week. So we did spend time in the schools at the preschools. And we weren't able to get to the elementary school, but we're developing a plan to be more active in the schools throughout the year. So we'll spread the fire prevention messages throughout the year as we go. So excited for the potential with that. Also been working with the high school to plan a more permanent bonfire pit. They've got one planned for later this month, and hopefully the football team does well out there. Inspection side of things, we did meet with town staff as we prepare for the end of the short term rental moratorium and just planning our processes there. We did, we ended our candidate academy, which is required for all volunteer, new volunteers coming on. And we just graduated four candidates into the program, which is great, as well as one of the former BV fire volunteers. Corey has joined up with us and we're running him through a more expedited candidate academy because he did do fire one with us earlier this year. So we're excited to have him on board. We did get a chance to go tour the water treatment plant. He'll look at the chemicals, work with them to do some pre-planning for the future with things there. Halloween was a busy night. We did participate in the Avery Parsons parade, as well as we did have trucks at the Cornerstone Church and the drive-in for the big trick or treat events. And we did have two engines in our UTV out throughout town handing out necklaces that night. We, we actually handed out almost 1,000 glow necklaces and make them more visible while they're out trick or treating. So it was nice to see that. It kind of just the, you know, for us as, as chief of fire through the county, we're prepping for the winter season. We're already starting to see snow on, on Monarch. So we're prepping for that, getting ready for the snowy conditions. Our Pontius Springs Fire Station addition is still moving along, still hoping for January, February timeframe on that and see Chaffey Chips program. We're going to be meeting to identify the four communities for next year. So excited to figure out which ones we're going to do and make that announcement. And also to kind of tie onto something that Philip said in, in his report, we had a report from Ken Maxwell and all the mitigation stuff going on. Prior to this meeting, we just came from meeting with Game Trail. That's another area that we're targeting, trying to get different landowners to have projects come together to do more work in that area, which is all, you know, crucial for that watershed for the town. So I'm excited with momentum that we can build from there and start tying all these projects on the, the whole west side together. And that's all I've got for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And, and we appreciate your efforts of tying the community together, I guess is the best way to put it. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief? Thank you very much. Next are the business items. First item, a business item is a public hearing. Should the Board of Trustees approve an application for a retail marijuana store license for PCG1 LLC? The board will consider issuing a retail marijuana store license to PCG1 LLC located at 318 Charles Street, John Davis owner. I open this public hearing, we'll hear from staff first.
Mayor and trustees, I'll give a quick overview of the memo that was in your packet. On September 10th, PCG1 LLC owner Sean submitted a phase two retail marijuana application to the town. And on September 23rd, they submitted their state application to Colorado Department of Revenue Marijuana Enforcement Division. As of today, the Marijuana Enforcement Division has not issued the state license. But by statute, CEDAR must approve or deny a new retail marijuana business license within 45 to 90 days of the middle date, which is December 22nd, 2021. PCG1 is in the process of purchasing the building located at 318 Charles Street. Closing date is undetermined. Town attorney Catherine, Catherine Sellers and the town planning department has determined a certificate of occupancy will not be issued for the proposed license premise and no use of the property as described in the application may occur until the town approves a minor subdivision correcting the illegal subdivision of lot seven, block 15 of the original platte of the town of Unavista. The license for the retail marijuana store will not be issued until this condition is satisfied. The store will be located within 1,000 feet of the Shining Mountain Montessori School. This location does not meet the restrictions outlined in section 6 dash 60 per N C per N one of the Unavista Minnesota court code stating that the establishment must not be located with 1,000 feet of a school. Town staff interprets the location restrictions in this code to be applicable when a phase two application is submitted to the town for review. PCG1 submitted the application on September 10th before the effective date of any land use or building permit application from the proposed school was received. The town staff and town attorney are taking the position that the proposed location complies with section 6 dash 60 of the town code. Although the Board of Trustees acts of the, acts as a local licensing authority and decides whether the proposed site is permissible. PCG1 LLC will remodel the building and is planning to open in the spring of 2022. Projected opening date would depend on when PCG1 LLC can complete the minor subdivision process, have permits and plans approved, and when they can procure the necessary materials to complete the construction. I know so the public hearing was published in the Chaffey County Times on October 20. The notice of the public hearing was published in the Chaffey County Times on October twenty-first and noticed on the property on October twenty-first. A comment related to the location of the retail marijuana license was received from Rachel Kramer. Letter was attached in the memo and a background check was done on Sean Davis and it came back with satisfactory results. Proprient fees have been paid and staff has deemed the application incomplete. To be in tandem with the Colorado Department of Revenue Marijuana Enforcement Division on issuing an expiration dates of a marijuana license, staff is recommending that the board conditionally approve the application. Conditions include the following. State license issued by the Colorado Department of Revenue Marijuana Enforcement Division, a fully executed deed or lease, approval of a minor subdivision correcting the illegal subdivision of lot seven, block fifteen of the original platte of the town of Unavista, submission of a site plan of the exterior of the building, premise plan of the interior of the building, approved security plan, completed construction, certificate of occupancy issued by the Chaffey County Department of Developmental Services and the town of Unavista, and a fire inspection by the Chaffey County Fire Protection Department. The retail marijuana license would be given to P C G one once all these conditions have been met. And staff is requesting that the board conditionally approve, approve with amendments or deny this application.
Okay, thank you. Are there any clarifying questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm just wondering what, what does it mean that there is this illegal subdivision of lot seven?
I am going to refer that question either to Town Attorney Jeff Parker, who's on the line, or Joseph Typle.
Yeah, I, I can address that for you. Basically, the town code requires that there be town approval to divide a lot into other lots or to carve out a section of a lot to make another, another lot. And several years ago, one of, I guess, lot seven was divided into two different parcels via deed without town approval. And therefore, the subdivision of this lot was not done legally under, actually state law and the town code. And your town code also contains a provision that says that no permit shall be issued for a use on a lot that's not in compliance with the provisions of your U D, U D C, your development code. And so that's the issue that we're dealing with right now is that a portion of the building that sought to be licensed sits on two different lots and one of the lots, lot seven, was basically divided into two parcels. And so it's basically sitting on a lot that's, it's basically not legally subdivided. And so we, we don't actually determine what has to happen. We're, we're advising you, so I want to be clear, you know, I know Paula had read something that said, you know, we determine that you can't issue a license. But our advice is that the code basically doesn't allow you to issue a license until the subdivision issue is cleared up. And so you could issue, you could grant the license subject to a condition that the subdivision issue be resolved properly prior to issuance of a C O and commencing operation of the business. So that's, that's hopefully the, hopefully understandable short summary of the situation.
Does that help?
That does help. And I, I don't suppose you're in a position to say what they have to do to correct this before we can issue the license.
Well, I don't want to give legal advice, but you know, typically when you have to, they're actually, my understanding is that they may be, they're considering purchasing the portion of the lot where the building sits on. And then to do that, they would basically have to submit a subdivision application to add that portion of the lot to the main lot where the majority of the building is, which would basically reconfigure lot eight and lot seven. So they would basically have a structure that sits on one lot, doesn't straddle a lot line illegally, and then resolves the deed that basically conveyed lot seven or basically divided lot seven into two lots illegally. So it would basically just be coming to the town for what I think is a minor subdivision approval.
Yes, and the minor subdivision approval is, is normally an administrative approval. The town administrator does have the authority to refer it up to P and Z if, if they deem fit. But the minor subdivision process is, is relatively straightforward and normally administered. Is there a cost effect with that?
Minor subdivision application fee is, I want to say it's five hundred dollars. There's a couple of different kinds of minor subdivision. Whether you're doing a lot line elimination or, or creating lots, that kind of thing.
Gotcha.
So it might vary a little bit from that number. And then there's obviously the cost of the surveyor that the.
Any other questions, clarifying questions, go ahead.
I kind of have a question, but I don't know if it makes sense, but I'll try my best. So if this is a legal subdivision to begin with, I heard, right, it was like a deed that should have never happened because it didn't have the blessing essentially of towns, that kind of. I believe that's what I heard. So if that's the case, how comes the original people that did that, like? Why isn't it taken up with them? You're, you're giggling, so I'm like, oh, God. But I mean, like, why, why, why does it have to be put on somebody else to take care of somebody else's mistake? It's kind of what I'm getting at.
Yeah, I, I can answer that. I mean, you know, the, these happened a while ago and I don't have the full chain in front of me right now of who conveyed to who and how it goes on. But, you know, ultimately, when you buy a piece of property or you look to do someone a piece of property, you know, issues that exist on that property run to you as far as the town is concerned. I mean, we could certainly look to other individuals to address it, but ultimately the owners of the current owners of the property have a responsibility to deal with title issues and they can certainly look back via their contracts with the individuals they bought it from to look to them or to their title company to resolve issues if, if, if there's an issue. But, you know, as far as the town is concerned, you're just looking at this from a town code perspective, which basically says if there's a violation of the code, you're not, you're not allowed to issue a permit for that, for that parcel of property until that violation's remedied. And so, I mean, they can certainly go back to the other individuals and deal with that issue. But as far as the board is concerned, you know, we don't really care how it gets resolved, but it's because they're the ones coming for us forward for a license. From your perspective, it's their responsibility to resolve the issue. Does that help?
Yes, that helps. I just, like I said, it's kind of just curious about, it's an interesting situation to begin with because it was an illegal thing to be, to begin with, so.
Yeah, frankly, it's not super uncommon. I mean, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding from property owners about being able to convey portions of their property without getting, you know, following the formal subdivision process. And so, I mean, these, these have happened, you know, ten years ago, twenty years ago, depends upon exactly when, but it's really, your town is going to have a hard time going back and trying to find the individuals who did it in the first place. So this is one mechanism for you, frankly, to clean up issues that exist in the town for future, future buyers and for just town planning purposes. It's kind of, kind of catches these things unfortunately for this, this applicant, but it, it basically requires that they get resolved. So ultimately, these issues sort of hopefully will end up sort of one by one getting fixed as the town deals with them.
Thank you.
And that's, I'm sorry, that's why I was giggling is because I, at least a handful in the last three years maybe.
Really?
That we've had this same thing over and over.
Okay, gotcha. I'm like, there had to be more to that. Like, wait a minute.
I'm not laughing at you. It's like now that's just, we inherited this and we find these every time we turn around.
Got it.
It's unfortunate. That's the way it is. Any other clarifying questions? Okay, I open this portion of the meeting to the applicant. If you would like to make a comment. Please state your name.
Absolutely. Good evening. My name's Adam Paul. How are you? Well, and I'm, uh, work with P C G one on the governmental affairs. We have the owner Sean Davis, who's here with us tonight, and the director of retail, Patrick. Just a quick history of who we are. We're actually all friends who started in this business accidentally. Sean's dad retired in, where he grew up in Rico, Colorado, and started in the medical business of marijuana and went into retail. And so the first store was in Telluride, Colorado. The second store is in Durango. And our borough is right down the street in Como, Colorado, twelve thousand square foot light deprivation greenhouse. So we're thrilled to have this opportunity, Mr. Mayor, trustees, to be here with you and have this opportunity. And I would like to just mention the team, the staff here is incredible and they've been wonderful to work with. Paula and Philip and Mr. Typle, Mr. Doring have really bent over backwards. So I want to thank you for that. As you can imagine, that's not always the case. So very proud of that. We started this journey when we were awarded this opportunity. And as you know, there is a limitation to where these can go within your community. So it was quite a, a struggle to try to find a location that we could, we could place this operation. And found a couple of different spots, one with very little visibility on the far south end of town. And then found some other areas that were probably available, but those owners didn't want to work with cannabis operations. We certainly understand that and respect that. So we settled on three eighteen Charles, worked with Mr. Francis, Roger Francis, who owns the Sanchez Restaurant. And decided that that could be a great opportunity. We are sensitive to the Kramer's comments about parking. It is something we deal with. Our Telluride location has parking. And so we have started to talk with Mr. Francis of a shared parking agreement with the restaurant and looking at other opportunities to find parking rather than just the on-street. So we are sensitive to that and we'll try to work forward, moving forward. Complication with this timeframe, the location, and the fact that the trading post was in operation when we discovered it. We then had to not only work with Mr. Francis to purchase the building or to put something forward to purchase it, but also to work with the tenant, Mr. Wood, to help him and his business relocate. So we started that. We set our closing date for tomorrow, knowing that we'd be here today. And then unfortunately, Mayor, to your point, this stuff happens all the time in city government. It was discovered that something was filed wrong and now in our due diligence, that was not found, that was not found by our title company. So we didn't know that that was coming. And so it has been a challenge now to figure out what do we do? Because Mr. Francis is also looking to purchase a restaurant elsewhere contingent on the closing of this business and the proceeds from this business. And now the business essentially cannot be sold, I guess, according to, I think, Mr. Park, you may be able to weigh in because of the subdivision issue. And so we're super supportive of all the conditions going forward tonight. But we would ask consideration on a couple of things and that would be to let us pull back and lease right now. The understanding is if we lease this property for the time being, we can then in good faith and commit to you that we will start the subdivision. It's not only on this lot. My understanding is it's actually five lots over there. And we would be leading that and trying to get the other owners on board. And not only is it what's above ground, my understanding is of what's below ground and that's really the issue. We don't know what utilities are where, what easements need to take place. So this is going to be an added expense and certainly time for us. Whereas if we're held to not being able to open until a subdivision is done, that could take a long time. As you're fully aware, it's hard to find folks. We've placed calls for a couple of weeks since we found out that this was the case. We've yet to have anybody return our phone calls to come and do a survey. We've started to look in the Denver metro area to see if we can bring folks out to try to get this process going. But Mr. Sanchez or Mr. Francis needs to close on his next property by December sixth. So our ask would be to figure out how we can maybe say we will continue forward. We will work on the subdivision, do everything in our power to at least do ours and work with the others to bring them all into compliance. And then we don't believe at this point that we would need to do anything inside that would require a permit, which then would allow us not to need a certificate of occupancy going forward. And so we could simultaneously move forward once the other criteria is taken care of to then get the store opened and then finalize the subdivision. I'm happy to, to answer any questions. Again, just really thank you and thank the team for all their work during this process.
Trustees, questions? You mentioned something about a lease. So that would be in lieu of ownership. Is that what you're implying then?
Yeah, so what we would try to work out is where we would upfront the lease with kind of a lease to own with the goal to own. But the understanding is since it can't be sold legally, we would revert to the lease, which would allow us to get things moving, potentially get open. Then once the subdivision is done, we would finalize the purchase. That would also allow Mr. Francis to have some upside money to cover his next purchase of, of the, another restaurant that he's looking to open.
Got you. Thank you.
May I ask a question, Mayor?
Yes, please.
So sorry, I haven't had a chance to really, you know, consider this very clearly, but I guess I'm not, I guess I'm trying to understand what the lease does. Would you be leasing both lot eight and then a portion of lot seven where the building basically straddles the lot line and encroaches? Is that what the concept would be?
So we would, we would be taking over the existing lease of that outpost. I'm not sure as it currently stands that there, in all the paper we have, there's not two leases in that, it's one leased building. So we'd be just taking over that portion while we work through the subdivision process.
So I guess what I'm trying to understand is that we have a building that straddles two lots, lot eight and lot seven. And I, I'm just trying to understand, I guess, you know, you typically lease the property the building's on. And that's why I'm trying to understand what the, what the license would actually be for. If we issued a license, for what property are we going to issue the license for? And, and I, I thought that lot seven had another structure on it as well. I just don't have my map up here right now. So I'm just trying to understand what property would be actually be, be licensed subject to your lease.
Mayor, if I may, I think we may need to do a point of clarification. The original lots that we were being looked at, there was two buildings. That was when you were looking at Niko Jewelers with the building behind. The way I understand it, where the trading post is, that's only one building. But Jeff, the first initial buildings they were looking at were two buildings, but that's not what the application was submitted with. So I think we need to verify that everyone is talking about the same piece of property in the same lots. And if they do straddle two lots.
Yeah, I guess, sorry, does my, maybe I'm not understanding correctly, but my understanding was that there was the building that you were going to operate and license set partially on lot eight, which you were going to purchase, and then also partially on lot seven, which you were looking to purchase as well. Maybe I'm not understanding. It's one building.
Mr. Parker, I guess it was suffice, we could go off the legal description that the title company, that we've submitted to the title company through the county that describes that outpost property. To the clerk's point, I'm, I'm not sure. Maybe there is some confusion because at one point we were looking at the jeweler where there is a residential complex kind of separated by a yard.
And Joseph, you had a comment?
Yeah, I guess a couple of questions or, or maybe comments to Jeff and in clarification. One would be currently, unless you all move forward with the purchase, all these properties are under the ownership of one person, one entity. And so the, the distinction between lot lines, I think that might be part of the reason there hasn't, this hasn't been discovered is that it's just sort of one person. And then the, the other is just a clarity that three eighteen Charles Street is a single building lot right next to Casa Sanchez. We're not talking about the jeweler, the old jeweler. So it does have a single building on.
And that's what you were clarifying.
Clarifying, yes.
Yes.
And as another clarifying point, does it straddle two lots then, Joseph?
Well, yeah, yes.
Okay.
But I, I think part of the reason that hasn't been discovered is one, there haven't been permits that have been tried to be pulled recently. But the other is that being under one owner, they own both lots anyways. And so there maybe has a recognition that this, that building straddles two lot lines.
Got you.
Yeah. And the reason why I'm, I'm sort of raising the issue is because when you issue a license for marijuana operation, you got to make sure you're issuing a license for the proper property. And so I, I, and, and, you know, if the building is sitting on two lots, you generally issue a license for the two lots in the structure. And I guess, I guess I just want to make sure that we're all clear what we're actually being asked to issue a license for. And, and, and I'm just, I'm not trying to make this difficult. I'm just trying to understand what is going to be leased. Because when I, I mean, I'm looking at just an overview map. I don't have a survey, obviously. But it looks like there is, you know, Casa Sanchez, which is mostly on lot seven. And then, then this three eighteen Charles, where the proposed marijuana operation will be, is partially on lot seven and then mostly on lot. And then mostly on lot eight. And so that's why I want to make sure I understand what's going to be leased and and then what are we going to be licensing? And it was my, my concern is I'm not, I'm just not necessarily sure a lease fixes the issue. Because we're, we're issuing a license for a structure that's on. A lot that's partially illegally subdivided and the lease is going to have to be for that portion of the lot as well. And so I'm not trying to do this hard. I'm just trying to make sure we comply with our code. And I'm not sure a lease just solves the issue. But maybe I'm not understanding. And that's why I want to make sure I'm I'm giving the applicant opportunity to explain. That's all.
Just these questions, comments. I mean, the first, go ahead, Dave.
Question I've got is. I guess regardless of time sensitivity, it sounds like, it sounds like there's a lot of. Stuff that's not exactly understood. And then the list of conditions is is bigger than than we've, than we're typically presented with. So is there a time sensitivity to to granting, granting the 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 permit tonight? Question for the applicant.
Yeah, no, thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to get going as soon as possible and and this will help us figure out how do we move forward with Mr. Francis. We also have a tenant who has moved out that we're financially supporting and trying to figure out what does his future look like. So that's part of our our sensitivity is how how do we move forward? And and I know, you know, the the list of conditions. A lot of these are are pretty easy just for us to figure out our our final drawings and things like that. But, you know, we had hoped to get open by the end of the year or but early next year, but if we can't. You know, if if we get into a situation where we're looking to do a subdivision. And God forbid, they find utilities because there are, my understanding is there's another ownership group. Has a parcel over there too. If we get into looking at moving utilities or they won't grant an easement. Are we starting to look at this? Could really take a lot of time. And meantime, we're not operating at all and bringing any kind of revenue in. For the town or or for this operation.
Understandable. I was just trying to figure out how to how to craft the conversation.
Why wouldn't it be feasible, Jeff, for them to lease the building without the property underneath it? I mean, isn't that a concept?
It is a, well, it's a concept, but I mean, my point is the building sits on two lots. Right? And so it sits on, it straddles a lot line, which is basically not permissible under your code. That one issue. And then it also is on a, on another lot that has a illegal subdivision on it. And so that's the issue that I'm, we're dealing with. And I guess I'm not understanding why a license changes that, whether they're purchasing it. I guess the purchase itself would be an illegal purchase if they were trying to buy a portion of lot seven without subdividing it. So that that's a, that's a bigger issue, I think. And that's kind of the primary issue we looked at. And then I just, I frankly just heard about the 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 lease option this evening before your meeting. And, you know, I guess the issue is that they're leasing a portion of lot seven where there's the violation. Because that's where the building is located. But I guess, I guess I I'm still not clear. That's actually what's happening. I just want to make sure that I'm actually right. If they, if they were going to lease the building itself, they would be leasing the building which sits on lot seven and lot eight. Is is that accurate? Maybe that's the question for the applicant.
Yeah. So so Mr. Parker, thank you. And please, sorry, everyone else, I'm not an attorney. So. I think that the lease would be written to include whatever legal description we have. For that outpost building. So if it would be, if it is two parcels, then it would need to be written that way. And the reason. Mr. Parker, we came to ask for the lease option is because we were told it is illegal to do a purchase. Without this being subdivided. So that would totally take all of this off the table. It would then make Mr. Francis lose his timeframe in early December. And so we're trying to. Find a way that we can all work together. We want to support the town in making this fix, right? Whatever that fix is. We just like a little bit of help. I mean, we did our due diligence and this didn't come to light. And so we want to get the corrections. We want to help Mr. Francis. And then we also have a tenant. Who has shut his doors and looking to move. So trying to balance it and come up with a creative solution. And and I'm looking at that parcel. I'm looking that up right now to see if I can get you the exact description.
And may I ask a question?
Mr. Go ahead. Yes, please.
Is it possible to write a lease and and or issue a license to an address instead of a legal description? Would that have any bearing on this if we just wrote the license for that?
Yeah, addresses are are not really accurate. You're going to want to know exactly the boundaries of the licensed area. Yeah, I mean, usually, usually when you license a a building, you license the property with the building or lease the building, for example. And and when you license a building, you you issued for the property. Of itself, because, you know, people are going to walk in the door. They're going to, you know, they're going to have stuff out, you know, operating out in the back. Is, I don't know if there's parking out back or not, that's going to be used for this premises. I mean, generally, that's all part of the the licensed area. You know, so I think if if you, if, you know, this is, I, this is, I'm not trying to make an issue here. This, this is the, the board's decision as to what. Is going to comply with your code and what's an appropriate way to proceed. I think if you basically are. Trying to avoid the the major issue, which is a purchase of. A parcel of property that hasn't been subdivided or a portion of a parcel, which is clearly in violation of your code and state law. And you're willing to basically accept a lease for a portion of that. You know, on the condition that this subdivision issue gets resolved, I guess, you know, that that would be. The the lesser of, I guess, twoish, two evils in a way because. Your code, the issue is, the issue we're dealing with is your code, which basically is. You can't license or issue a permit for for, you know, use on a lot that's in violation of your code. And the concern is, you know, the lots in violation, even if it's not being sold illegally because. It was illegally subdivided in the first place, and you've got a structure that straddles a lot line, which is also illegal. And so, you know, by subdividing it, to include that portion of the building, you resolve everything. But that sounds like that's a problem for the applicant, timing wise. So I mean, the clean, clear, fully in compliance with the code solution is to require the subdivision. And then the building is now no longer straddling a lot line. It's no longer an illegal subdivision. The permit can be issued or become effective. That's the clean solution. Sort of the less clean solution is to allow for a lease. While this gets resolved, perhaps you give some time period to do that. And then if it's not done within that time period, the license could be revoked. So I I'm trying to give you options here, but I, you know, obviously the cleanest solution that's clearly meeting the code requirements is to require a subdivision. Proper, a proper subdivision.
Trustees. Thoughts?
My opinion is it just needs to be cleaned up before we go on.
Cindy, you got something, Devin?
Yeah, I have something, or you can go first, Cindy.
Oh, thank you. I do think that this is a major concern and with. Our attorney, Jeff, making. Observations, comments, it's something that we should take seriously. And I'm still stuck on. It right across the street from the monastery school. I, if we knew this was going to. Happen, I wasn't aware of the location when we were voting on. The monastery school renting the old chamber building. So I do have some major concerns and. Yes, I do have some major concerns.
Devin, go ahead.
Yeah. If we were to approve. License with the conditions that are written, wouldn't that. Require this subdivision to be cleaned up in order for this to happen? Or we could require that, like Jeff stated, correct? Like, we could require that as part of. The conditions.
Yeah, that was one of the recommended conditions.
Yeah, and that would be a cleaner way to approve it. You know, I don't like the idea of approving some, you know, I can kind of see it in my mind as a building and a land. They're not connected, so. I I, you know, I see that as an issue, obviously. So. Like if, I don't have a problem with approving it as long as it, as that gets cleaned up, but. You know, if that helps the applicant be able to clean up that. That issue, then I don't see a problem with it, but obviously I don't want to give a license to a building that's illegal, so. I don't know. Other thoughts?
Thank you, Devin. Thank you, Cindy. Dave?
No, that that actually, thank you, Devin. That was, that that kind of clears that up. If we, if we do move forward with this. That would have to be addressed somewhere.
You know, and obviously, when you look at. To conditionally approve, and those are the conditions. That were listed, basically go, you know, certificate of occupancy, all, you know, all of those are listed as conditions. It doesn't change that part of it, and I understand where Jeff's coming from.
Gina, thoughts?
Well, my, if I'm understanding correctly, the reason for the ask, I think, to lease. So they they can get to this point of making everything correct. Which I, I respect that. I would like, yes, that's what has to happen, otherwise it's it's no good, right? But I understand there's costs and fees and there's other parties involved too, and I'm. I'm trying to be mindful of those people as well and where they're at. And so I. I don't know all the, well, I couldn't come up with additional conditions, if you will, but like. I don't necessarily think doing some version of a lease is. The worst idea, again, because I'm thinking about the other parties involved. But all with the idea that it has to be maybe within a certain amount of time, you know, having the T's cross ties dotted. So I would be willing to entertain the idea of doing some version of a lease, even though it's not the cleanest thing at the moment. But with the effort to get to where it needs to be.
And and, I mean, I'm looking at your timeline. Obviously, your projected opening of twenty twenty two and spring of twenty two, you know, it's a broad statement, but. The. Possibility, let's say, of getting all of this tied up in that amount of time. Is that reasonable? I mean, you know, you could still keep moving through the process of your building and working through it and stuff like that. The unfortunate part is the deadlines you're up against. The building you're buying, the people that you're have displaced and and all of this and trying to make everything and keep in motion. To keep that part of it to working for you. Do you think it's possible to get everything done by twenty twenty two? And I mean, that's a very broad ask. I mean, you're going, I don't know. It depends what we find underground, just what you said.
Thank you, Mayor, for that. And I might ask Sean to maybe address a little bit more. And to be clear, so the legal description is lot eight. And five feet of lot seven. So there's five feet of this lot that is on different. Five feet of that is on lot seven. So it's not substantial as we know of. But to to your question, so. I would, I would say there is an inherent risk that we purchased the building, right? We continue through all of this. We pay for the, a formerly see to move on, which has been substantial too. And then we go through the town process and for some reason, we're not granted subdivision. And so we put in all this investment and paid everybody else. And we can't, we reached that final step with a subdivision and therefore we're out of. That location and potentially licensed. I mean, these were the prescribed areas that the town said that marijuana could go. And so that would be the other thing. And I think that has been, you know, our concern is. We'll do all of this and we've had great dealings with the town. We don't have any problem trying to figure out the process. Or understanding that we're going to have folks that are going to be willing to help us. But for some reason, if we came down to it legally, we couldn't subdivide, then we'd be in deep trouble. And and to your credit, you can't guarantee that we're going to be able to legally subdivide either, right?
A lot of it's contingent upon the other, the other owners, unfortunately. Go ahead.
I'm Sean Davis.
Yes, this is your, your floor time. Go ahead.
Yeah, so. A a bigger concern as well is Mr. Francis. If if this is essentially his issue at this point, because you can't sell his property until this is done. If we go through this subdivision process and there's utilities that need to be moved, and easements that are granted and and things that could come up. He he's going to have to incur the cost and and say he's going to move waterline or gas line or sewer line. There there's a very good chance that he throws his hands up and say, hey, this isn't worth it to us. Or he puts it on us and say, hey, the price of the building just went up a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which. Then makes it not viable for us. So I think that's more of our concern at this point is that we go down this subdivision process. And it becomes, but it becomes not viable for him or for us. At at some point now, if we, if we're able to operate while we're going and and we're fine. With with a, with some sort of a timeline on getting the subdivision done. We don't want to open up and then say, oh, yeah, we'll, we'll push this subdivision down the road. We're totally able, willing to work on it. If we're generating revenue. Now the possibility of it being viable for us, our tolerance is much higher because now we're generating revenue. We have money to pay for, you know, maybe a extra hundred thousand dollars or or whatever it is, but we don't have that upfront. So I think that's. That's our main concern is to is to get this thing now, if if the minor subdivision goes smooth and it's a month or two month process, that's fine. I just. I don't, we don't know what we don't know, so we have to plan for the worst. And so that's, I I think that's why we're asking that if we can meet all the other conditions here. And 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 work this into a lease with an option of purchase with a deadline of saying, hey, get the subdivision done by this amount of time. I feel like that helps everyone get to where they need to be, helps town get to where they need to be. Or you need to be, and it helps us. Bridge gap, bridge.
Libby?
Well, I was kind of concerned about you saying that you don't need any permits. And it it seems likely to me that you are going to need some permits. I don't know what they are, but they might be electrical or sewer. Some, some kind of permits. So you are going to need a certificate of occupancy. Which I would think would apply in either case. Maybe it doesn't apply to a lease. Do we know that? Anybody?
I mean, we would, if we, if we do build out, it requires a permit.
Yeah. So I mean, I think you are going to be looking at the permitting process.
The layout that is there now will allow us to open without doing any electrical, any plumbing, anything that would require a permit now. Down the road, sure, we would probably upgrade our build out and maybe put in some, some different restaurants or or put in some lights in some other areas. But we would put that off, you know, until the subdivision was done. So we've been in there and we've kind of thoroughly examined and then laid out a floor plan of where our display cases would go, where lights currently are, where outlets currently are. To run our registers, run our computers and all that stuff. And it all, it all works without us doing any approval. And it's. If you haven't been in there, it's just the open box right now with with light, tracked light. It's, it's, it's very easy to kind of plug and play furniture in there.
Mr. Mayor.
I guess that this subdivision issue feels like it's about the same as discovering that. You know, that there's something else that needs to be fixed in terms of electrical or plumbing or, you know, now this is a, you know, a titling issue. That needs to be fixed in the same, same sort of way. So I don't know. I mean, can we get comfortable with a lease or? You know, what do we feel about that?
Joseph, you had a comment?
Just wanted to clarify a little bit. The the applicant did accurately state that the illegal subdivision issue applies to five lots. Near this location or adjacent. However. Their their generous offers to involve those other owners, notwithstanding the requirement for their operation and the requirement of this condition. Would only affect Casa Sanchez's property and their property. That would be the only, the minimum required for the subdivision. If if any of those other. If, if any of those other lot owners wanted to pull a permit for any reason at all, even just to fix a roof. They would then need to correct their own subdivision issue, so I think it behooves all of them to work together, but that's not the minimum requirement for this particular subdivision correction. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that the minor subdivision could be as small as these two lots in question to clean up that, that issue. To move forward, yep.
My question is. I guess I look at this and I go, what would really be the difference between the lease or go ahead with this? If we were to approve this conditionally, how is that different than the lease?
Uh, I think that it gives, so if we go into the subdivision process as, as it's laid out. Right now, and it turns into a six month process, it, it becomes.
And, and I might, th- this is kind of an interesting side note, we do have a building in Denver with a manufacturing facility. Part of it is like, one building, part of it is licensed, there's a hallway that separates another part that's not licensed. So if we were looking at, you know, saying, well, we're not going to license whatever this five feet is. Everything else is licensed, I suspect that five feet's outside, but that is not uncommon where you do have a licensed portion of a building and unlicensed.
Any other questions for the applicant? Yeah, at this point, thank you. I'll close this. Question is, now I open this up for public comment. Is there anybody who would like to make public comment? And do you have anybody there, Philip, by any chance? Just out of curiosity.
Uh, again, as a reminder, if you're on Zoom, you can raise your hand if you would like to speak in public comment. Or put something in the chat. I am not seeing anything at this time.
Anything, I close this, uh, portion of the public hearing, public comment. Um, any other clarifying questions, trustees, before I close that portion of the public hearing? Yeah, close that portion of the public hearing. Deliberation between trustees. Cindy, in, in respect to your comment about the Montessori school, this was approved before the Montessori school. And so therefore, to rescind this app, this approval. Because we approved something after the fact. Um, doesn't seem really necessarily fair, if you want to put it that way, because we approved this first. Go ahead, Philip.
Is it okay if I just clarify that? We accepted a complete phase two application. Prior to the school signing a lease for the chapel building. And staff determined that at that time, that qualified as. Securing that location to then complete the licensing process. Right, so we didn't, we, I just want to make clarification, we did not approve them, because staff cannot approve them. But, but, um, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a challenging situation in that. You know, you, you don't want to put somebody at risk of losing. Something that's completely out of their control, once they do submit what we consider a complete application, and so that's what Paula described in her memo. As that determining factor. And not that it was relevant to that determination by staff. But just a reminder that the Montessori school is in the chapel temporarily, that is not their long-term location.
That's the other comment I was going to make, is that is a temporary location, and they've already stated that, they knew they were going to have to grow it.
Thank you.
Um, any other, any other comments or questions? Thoughts?
Always have something.
You know, that's what we're here for.
Um, I would just, I, you know, just hearing a little bit more, I. And, and kind of going off your question, the difference of the two, and that's where, like, I feel the lease option, I can understand. They need to be able to have the option to make funds if they do run into trouble, and I can appreciate the fact that they want to work. With everybody else, the good intent means a lot to me, it says a lot about their character. So I think if there was some timeline or something set, or something we could monitor to make sure they're moving into. Um, the ability to make sure they do do the subdivision and gets done, and, you know, like I said, cross the T's, dot the I's, I would be okay. Allowing for a lease to happen so that they could. Make some money while they're doing everything they need to do to be official, um, and then it helps out. Other folks that are also involved, because they can move on, um, and then also it sounds, so they'd be working with the other. Group of five, um, for anything else that could potentially pop up, it's a sticky situation to begin with, which nobody saw, so I don't understand, well. I think to come up with a, a clean way for everybody to have a successful way, I don't know, out of this, might have some stickiness to it as well. But, so I would be in support of. Moving forward with granting them the option of, of a lease.
You know, and when I read the conditions, uh, the first bullet point is a fully executed deed or lease. So that, that right there puts it as an option, the way I read that. Dave, comment?
Just, I want to try and move past that part for just a minute and work backwards, so. I don't think anybody is questioning, there's a, an issue with the applicant, with the, with the, the generalities of a location, with, with, with what we're doing outside of. That, that little. Technically, not technicality, it's a big technicality, but, um. Are there any other issues that we need to be talking about? No. Okay, then.
The things that.
Find a way to.
I think that is the prime bullet point, when, from what I've heard, I don't think there's ever been another comment that says, you know. Um, security plan or completed construction, you know, I mean, none of that has popped up, it's, it's plain and simple that it's, uh. An unfortunate circumstance that they've waltzed into, um, and not that we, there again, that we haven't seen it before. Uh, the property lines, actually, I think it killed one process, as a matter of fact, that was off of, uh, railroad. I think that one actually stopped, if I remember right, uh, they didn't want to pursue it, and, and it's, it's unfortunate. It can be very expensive, obviously. That's why I believe their comments to say if they can be in business. That can help provide revenue to remedy a situation if it goes that deep. And nobody knows at this point, especially in that part of town. I mean, obviously, it's an old part of town.
It sounds like there might be questions of whether this is. Doable at all from Jeff. Is that?
And I think that's, I mean, it, it obviously, and I think, and Jeff kind of made that clear, obviously, there's, we have our code that we abide by. The decision is still the board's, so no matter which way you want to go, the decision is still the board's. Norm, you know, your point is well taken, you said wait, I'm not arguing, going to argue that, it's the board's decision. If we want to go that way, and that's the board's decision, do you want to go that way? Do you want to, um. Push that issue, if you want to say that, because you can, you basically can approve that lease, if that's what you want to do, you can approve this conditionally. Um, the way it's set up, but according to our code, it has to be done a specific way.
Right.
That's the option you have as a board. Is to make that decision. It's unfortunate to me, and, and this is, uh, I hate to say it as a businessman. There's too many upworking parts in this. And, and there's not only you on the line, but the other two people that are displaced now, or will potentially be displaced. But deadlines, and one of them's already displaced. And so, you know, that, that's what makes it so unfortunate, in my opinion. If it was just you guys, hey. Okay, now you're going to wait, um, you know, let's get this straightened out, but. Uh, and that's actually, I think, one of the last situations I was in, it was the exact same thing, it was more than one person that was tied into it, it was really ugly.
So. Gosh, I'm having trouble digesting this, so we're being asked to.
Approve, approve conditionally, deny, I mean, you.
We're asking to, to, to. Override the code due to a scheduling. Scheduling, a, a conflict in schedules, I wonder what sort of a precedent that, that would set.
You could, I mean, essentially the lease, you're still holding their, their hand to the fire, in my opinion. They are going to have to. Straighten out the. Uh, approval of minor subdivision, that all has to be done still before they, the, the condition of their license will be that. That license can be revoked if they cannot do that.
Okay, so we're talking about, I'm sorry, from a naturalizing the conversation.
No, you're all right.
About not excluding the. The second bullet point of, of approval of minor subdivision.
Right.
Requested by the applicant. We're not talking about getting into that.
Right, that's still, I mean, that still has to be there for the, the potential purchase of the property, you still have to get that subdivision done, still has to be done.
So I have a question.
Yes.
Um. Dave said something about a temporary approval. Could we have a date that this has to be completed by, and it doesn't. Matter if you guys want six months, nine months, twelve months, just as long as there's a date that it has to be done by. So two, three years from now, we're still not operating under the lease program and not in. Code with the subdivision lots. Does that make sense?
That's a very good statement, uh, I think we want it, um, a time, time-related approval. Uh, it has to be time-specific, otherwise, if we approve it now with nothing, it could go on forever.
Right.
So I, I totally agree with that, Cindy.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
If we would do that, which I agree is a good idea, um, in their process of. Doing the subdivision, and if they run into major issues that would obviously push. That, like, that would, would there be space to grant? Like, if they needed an extra month, because I'd be, I would hate to just say, hey, we're going to make it six months. And then they start doing it, and they're doing everything they need to be doing, and then they run into a major hiccup that's obvious for all of us to see. Would there be, you know, the ability of an extension in an appropriate amount of time, just keep them honest and keep the process honest, but not to be like, well, that's just more bad luck.
Yeah, yeah, too bad, see you later.
Yeah.
You spent five million dollars, we don't care, see you later, we don't. I mean, obviously, and that's why I reiterated with that part of town. It's going to be very interesting to see what's going to be underground, um, to see what's may or may not, I mean, it may just go sweet, and, and. Hopefully, in your circumstance, if this is approved, that it does, but who knows? I mean, you know, you're, you're talking about a really old part of town there. Uh, and, and all you have to do is look at the way the streets align, and you know that could be real interesting. Other thoughts, Libby?
I just still have a problem with the idea of permits being issued on, on something where we know that it doesn't. Meet our criteria of, of having been split legally, um, and I'm wondering, does permit include license? Like a business license? Question for Jeff or Paula?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it basically says, like, you know, any permit required by the town code, um, you know. For me, I would think if it was something very minor, the town probably doesn't want to. Just crush somebody when they have to do something minor, like replace, like. Somebody needed to keep their, you know, their building operating, but, you know, generally, it, it says any permit, so. I think most permits, and particularly, you know, a license of this magnitude, you know, it definitely applies to, so.
I guess I would really like, um, Jeff's legal advice on this.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to provide it if the board wants, and I, I think that ultimately, I don't want to be telling you what you need to do, what you can't do, but your code basically says you can't. Issue a permit or a license to abuse a property, um, if, if it's not in compliance with the code. Um, you know, ultimately, right now, we don't have, um, proof that the applicant has. Control or ownership of the property at all, they're saying they will get it. I mean, typically, we'd have a more complete application before us prior to being in front of the board, this is partly why we're having trouble right now with this, people are trying to. Sort of figure out a way to thread the needle here and make this work, um, but right now, we don't have a lease, we don't have a deed. Um, you know, those are requirements for an application. You know, obviously, we don't want to, you know. You know, basically put a stop to a, a business this far down the road on a technicality, I just. Um, you know, when you get a liquor license, when you get a marijuana license, you got to show proof that you have the right to the property. And so typically wouldn't even consider it at this point. And, you know, a minor subdivision is usually pretty darn easy, you know, administratively approved, pretty quick, pretty easy. Um, you know, I would think it could be done pretty quickly, um, they're, they're done quickly in the town frequently. But the problem isn't the town's doing, it's that there's deadlines for the seller and for the purchaser to get something done, so. You know, I'm not trying to, you know, make this difficult, but none of this is really. The town's issue, um, these are all issues that would have to be resolved by any applicant for any license or any permit at any time in most cases. Um, so, you know, I think typically you'd see yourself providing, you know, thirty more days or something for the applicant to resolve these issues and come back with a complete application, so you wouldn't have to do these contortions, try and make things work. But if the board wants to basically try to find a reasonable solution, I, I guess for me, I would probably recommend. That you require that it all be resolved within a certain number of days. And I guess there's another issue is that it sounds like the applicant's not very excited about not being able to operate its business until it's resolved. So I mean, I think, you know, our recommendation was a condition, I mean, my first recommendation would be. Get it resolved, get a complete application before the board, and then you guys can make your decision. My second recommendation would be. Get it resolved prior to actually being a, able to operate under the license. My third recommendation would be get it resolved within so many days of actually beginning operation. I mean, each one of those is taking a step back from what you normally would require from any applicant in front of the town. Um, so that's the best advice I can give you, hopefully that makes sense.
It was, it's interesting to me, if they would have gone into a lease, none of this would have came to life, is that correct? Maybe? You think it still would have?
Maybe, you know, I mean, ultimately, you know, when you get a full review, you, you notice things like this, and so, I mean, our office might have noticed the fact that the building's straddling two lots. You know, that's not allowed under your code anyways, so.
Would it, it would have depended how the lease was worded, or how would have that? Because of it being a marijuana license, it would have been a different.
Well, you know, liquor licenses, liquor licenses get reviewed pretty carefully too, um, you know, liquor and marijuana licenses get the most, you know, detailed scrutiny in Colorado, without doubt.
Yeah, I mean, I, that's why, that's the first thing I think of, if it had not been a purchase, attempted purchase. If it had been just a lease of, for example, like my building, would have it possibly come to life? It would have just been, we leased a building, and here's the approval of the owner of the building, and. Um, I think circumstances have driven this different direction. Trustees. I'm open for a motion. Or if you need more clarification. Direction. Unfortunate circumstances.
Unfortunate circumstances.
It's, uh. And I hate to say. We're the ball in front of the eight ball. Because they're behind the eight ball, it's, it's kind of, kind of a tough situation.
Question two, so if we approve it. With staff recommendations of the, of the, of the conditions, that, that will satisfy all legal requirements, not everybody's requirements. It, it gives the applicant not what they wanted, but it does give them reassurance that, that. Town's not in opposition in any way, there's just some weird stuff in there that we, that's beyond our control, beyond your control.
Very true statement.
Okay, then I would make that motion to approve the application with the conditions as listed.
As listed.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, Faye, further discussion.
Yeah, I.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I see this as, you know, trustee Bulby put it pretty well in that, you know. Obviously, this is. Not exactly how we want it, but showing this. Shows that we want to keep everything in order and also support this business moving forward. Uh, and it gives the business. You know, some. Some clout to. Want to move forward. I, I would hope and to uh. Resolve this issue so they can get going. Um, so I. I support this.
Thank you, Devin. Any other comments?
I have a question. I have a question before I vote. Um, so are they taking out? The approval of a minor subdivision correcting the illegal subdivision. Of lot seven, block fifteen of the original plot of the town of Univista. Are they giving them an extended deadline? I'm not positive what we're voting on here.
It is the, uh, the motion was to conditionally approve with the conditions that you are reading, that you just stated. Those conditions are still in that motion.
Okay.
So in other words, they have to, they will have to have approval of a minor subdivision.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And Mayor may make a, a recommendation before this vote taken. I think that, um. It would be helpful to even have a deadline on these because I don't want to have an indefinitely approved application that could, that basically. You know, could basically tie up your ability to issue a marijuana retail marijuana, well, excuse me, retail marijuana license to another business. And they should be given a reasonable period of time to accomplish these things. But if you don't put a deadline on that, you're going to end up with a situation where they've got an approved license with sort of no deadline to take care of these conditions.
That's a good point.
I would amend the motion then. Six months, is that too far out?
That is your motion.
That is my motion. I'm amending it to include a six month.
Six month. Do you second that amended? We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? So we're adding six months to that, Paula. And thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Roll call vote.
May I ask one more question?
Yes, please.
Um, when, when you were reading through the memo, Paula, um, I think the first bullet point that you. Spoke had to do with there having an approved state license. But that's not in the memo. Correct, so. We're approving this. What's written down on this memo, right? Not.
Um. Well, if you.
You spoke.
Okay, I, I, as I read what the conditions are to be in tandem with the Colorado Department of Revenue, is that correct, Paula?
Correct. And to your point, trustee Fay, when I was doing my template for my minutes, I did put, moved to congressional, congressional, congratulate, excuse me, conditionally approved the retail marijuana store license for PCG one. Sean Davis Soder, conditions include the fully executed date, approval of the minor subdivision. And then I added that the state license would have to be issued also. So.
So it is in there.
It is in there, but it's not in what I see in front of me.
Just as I wrote, th- th- they can't operate without a state license either, so they're, they're going to have to get that even without the condition, just.
Okay.
Okay, is that clarified? Okay, so roll call vote, please.
Trustee Fay. Yes, trustee Nyberg.
No.
Trustee Lucretzi, yes. Trustee Rowe.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
And trustee Polpe.
Yes.
Okay, thank you all very much. Darn near 8:30.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next item on the agenda is a source water protection IGA and plan update adopts a route of resolution number forty-six series twenty-twenty-one entitled. A resolution of the Board of Trustees for an agreement between the town of Univista and Chaffey County concerning the source water protection plan and approving amendments to the plan.
But I'll start it off.
Okay.
And, and then, yeah, Sean's on Zoom, so. Uh, just real quick, uh, before I turn over Sean to highlight a couple of, of pieces of this. That are app, uh, applicable, um. The, this is, there's two parts to this to consider tonight, so one is the overall IGA with, between the town and the county. That outlines how we work together it for the source water protection areas. And, and tying into our source water protection plan. Uh, that plan was drafted and adopted by the board in twenty sixteen. And we have been operating with the county. According to that, uh, that plan and our existing municipal code ever since then. Uh, it was discovered that we had drafted an IGA. That the commissioners had looked at it, but it never made it back to the Board of Trustees. So, uh, to provide protection and as we have future staff turnover between the two entities, it's, it's important to have this IGA in place. Uh, just like we have our three mile planning IGA. Uh, with the county now as well, so that's the IGA portion of it. In the packet, uh, you are basically approving. Or considering approval of a draft of that IGA. We're still, uh, waiting on a, a few final adjustments from the county, but. The overall framework is there that just describes and outlines how we work together. The other part to, uh, get a couple of things done at once is. Since, uh, our, our staff, which, uh, is, uh, in this area is led by Sean. Uh, working with, uh, developments in the county. That, uh, are in the source water protection area. Um, they've identified a, a, an area of the plan. That they're recommending to, to update, so. Both of those things are before you and I'll turn it over to Sean if you want to highlight essentially what that change is to the plan and why. That'd be great.
Sure, thanks, thanks Philip. Good evening, everyone. Um, yeah, I'll just kind of go through, um, the memo here and, and just kind of hit. The highlights in the, the bold, the bold area, um. Paragraph section, just real quick, just to, you know, reiterate, you're, I think you're, we're all pretty aware of what the inter. Government agreement is for, um, to identify and support the town's waters, um, protection areas, source water protection areas and. The source water protection plan includes the town of Univista's water supply protection district. Um, you know, there's maps in that document that offer references, um. And information to support awareness and management and coordination, uh, within the county. And so the source water protection district for everybody, for, for clarity is, is not located within the city limits, it's located within the county. And so that's kind of where. The county and, um, the county's, uh. Engineering teams and, uh, development services teams kind of sees a lot of the, um. On-site wastewater treatment systems for residential development in that area. And so the source water protection plan. Document, guidance document, uh, provides some clarification. With the maps and, and with, uh, recommendations, proposed setbacks. Um, yeah, so the county support design recommendations that Philip was, um, um, just discussing. Um, just kind of some background, you know, on that, in that section there, I have that the, uh, town staff and chief of county development services have been. Coordinating, reviewing and managing the water supply protection district area since twenty seventeen. Well, that's when I started, so that's an easy call for me. On that, but, um. Um, there was a really interesting thing that happened in twenty seventeen and it was the, uh, a Trails West connection. Um, to a part of, part of the Trails West connected to the same, same district and there was a, a group of, of, uh. Uh, residents that. Were offered the ability to do onsite wastewater treatment systems. And so it's kind of a crash course for me. Um, but when we began doing that, um, we began sharing a, uh, a spreadsheet with the county identifying. A new onsite wastewater treatment systems within the source water protection district, so, um, um. Town staff, public works, public works engineering team. Um, along with, um, chief of county development services started tracking those then. And so that's kind of, I, I wanted to bring that up because. Yeah, we, we kind of thought we already had an IGA, um, county, uh, staff and town staff, so, uh, we were, we were approaching it, you know, with, uh. With, um. The understanding that, that we were all aware of where that map was and where that water supply protection district was. Anyways, um, yeah, moving, moving forward, um, you know, in, in twenty twenty-one, um. Um, I reached out to Gary Griner and he began at the onsite wastewater engineering, um, systems designs on behalf of the town to identify. The, uh. The higher level components there that, uh, engineering speak, um, so looking at, looking at designs and making sure that they're designed appropriately and. And so far this year, we, we reviewed and approved three designs. Um, it's been a pretty, pretty good process, um, kind of boots on the ground. We've been on site on both of those, uh, on all, all three of those, um. Uh, applications, um, and, uh. It's, um, it's a pretty good setup what we have right now. I just, just wanted to share that because. We, we, we're all aware of, of the effort that it takes and, and county support and, and county review has been, been vital on this. Um, the, um. Recommendation in, in the guidance document. And that's what we're talking about, the source water protection plan, the one that was drafted in two thousand and sixteen, not, not the ordinance. There's a table in there that has proposed water supply protection district zone categories. And, and the category three table, it's, it's more of a clarification is all it is. And so it kind of offers, um. The proposed sewage disposal method setbacks for that zone, which is one hundred. And, um. This, this isn't the ordinance or the code, this is in the document itself, so we're not looking to change anything in the code. Or the ordinance, uh, but we're just offering some clarity and, um, offering up the ability to provide. Um, root. Treatment designs that. Are. Appropriate. So, um, the closer you get to. Um, surface water repairing area and things like that, the higher level of the treatment system is, so a treatment level two and. Um, the, the N stands for nitrogen reduction. So the two hundred fifty to five hundred feet is a treatment level three. And so those are engineered systems. Um, they're just higher level engineered systems and it's good to be a little bit more specific in that because there's. There's a handful of power level engineered systems that could be proposed for that area. And, um, by identifying that, um, it probably provides, um, development. Uh, clearer understanding and it also has county support, which is really big since we're getting into this IGA and I think it's a really strong component to, to have their support in, in the way this document reads. Um, let's see. Yeah, just, and just for, you know, the, the memo has, it, it doesn't compromise the water quality vision for the source water protection plan. It, it still provides, um, um, a more, uh, you know, um, engineered. Treatment system for those locations as well. And, and, and just, you know, some of the conversations we've had with county and, and with staff to, you know, looking ahead. Um, I think that, you know. If we do want to. Do any more work with any of the, these bad tables in that, in that table, so like zone one, zone two. Um, that would require getting into the ordinance and, you know, right now we're not recommending doing that, but I do think that technology advancements over the years, um. Probably support that, you know, we review it and, and we would go into it, you know. Wide-eyed with the water advisory board, with our water engineering consultants and along with the county to do that, but. But, you know, in summary, we're just trying to clarify that table there and, you know. Design something that, you know. Is, um, more appropriate. Than what we had in there and offers more clarity, so. Yeah, that's, that's about all I have, I think, on that. You know, the table just promotes a user-friendly approach to design criteria is what it does.
Sean. Trustees questions? Comments, go ahead, Libby.
Um, Sean, you probably said this, but I missed it. What is ISDS?
Yeah, so, um. Individual sewage disposal system. Um, and OWTS onsite wastewater treatment system. Um, they mean the same thing. Um, so in our ordinance and the EPA, we talk about that as ISDS. In CDPH and Chaffey County regulations, it's called OWTS, so they should be side by side on there. Those are definitions that we updated in the source water protection plan.
Is that something other than a septic system?
It's a septic system. It's an individual sewage, uh. Disposal system, so it's a, it's a septic system.
Okay, thanks.
It's an onsite wastewater treatment system. Yeah, it's just a different way to say.
Good. Thank you.
Yep.
And, and Gina, just for your information. It happens to the best of us.
Yeah.
This was approved in twenty sixteen, Philip.
No.
Kind of slipped through the cracks, you know? But we're, we're cleaning it up now, but we've been operating under this. Since then. Not knowing that it was actually. Officially. And taking care of, so, so it happens to the best of us, so the lot line adjustments and stuff. Now, that was different, but the same. It just things happen.
Right, right.
That's why I left.
Yeah, no, I, I see it.
I've seen one or two. Any, any questions, Norm, anything? You saw this, everybody's seated, I think. I have an entertaining motion.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number forty-six series twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, Norm.
Second. Second.
Second, uh, you're low, oh, I know it's that time delay.
Yeah.
We have a second, let's, but I'll let Paula decide.
I already have Lucretzi typed in, sorry.
Well, darn. Uh, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Host, hearing none. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Philip, for clearing that up.
Yep.
And Sean, thank you. Uh, next item, oh, this could take a minute or two, uh, draft. You have to know Philip's going, no problem. Uh, draft of the twenty twenty-two fee schedule, I guess it is a draft, we're not approving anything. Uh, board will review the proposed changes to the twenty twenty-two fee schedule. Um, when do we approve this? First meeting in December?
We typically approve at the same meeting as the budget, so the first meeting in December. And what we try to do is present a draft of the proposed changes, just to give everybody a heads up to see what's coming. That, uh, gives the board an opportunity to. Kind of see those things and as you probably cut on, the, the changes are highlighted. Uh, in yellow and specific changes are in red. So you will see, um, through this that, um, across many of the departments, we're looking at adjustments to our. To some of our fees. I don't think that there's really anything. Big or new out of this iteration. It's mainly looking at our operating costs and things like that and comparing. Um, how our current fee schedule looks and trying to line those things up as best we can. Just a reminder that we use the fees to, uh, to do what we can to cover the cost of operation for those specific things. That are listed there, so. Um, so yeah, uh, I, I think I'll leave it at that unless there's any questions tonight, we can. Try to address them or we can, uh, bring them back at the next meeting, but again, it just gives a couple of meetings to. Warm up to what will be a final proposal, December fourteenth.
Uh, what do you prefer, Philip, if trustees have a, find something they see, to shoot you an email?
I'd send it to me, that would be great.
Okay, perfect. I mean, I did notice a fair share in the airport. Um. I guess nothing else really jumped out. Um, obviously some operational expenses there. The way I saw that. Any other questions, trustees, at this point? If you think of anything, just jot it down and shoot it to Philip.
And just to, just as a reminder, the board already approved the twenty twenty-two short-term rental. Uh, fees, so. That's completed.
Okay. There are no other questions on that. I will open the public hearing on the twenty twenty-two town of Univista budget. I open the public hearing. We will hear from staff.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees, um. My memo is on page four of the packet. I have included, uh, the. I have included uh, the. Uh, spreadsheet with the following adjustments. We added smart gov platform for planning permitting, code enforcement and business licensing, short-term rental licensing. And special events permit, permitting. This um, the cost of this has been spread between the pertinent departments. The airport has. Has uh, made some changes, some tweaks to their revenue and reduce their deficit. Um, updated revenues for short-term rental licensing. And increased public support for Chippy County housing. We propose to move forward with hiring a new patrol officer. Now, instead of waiting to January, January, it's not going to affect the budget. In twenty twenty one because they have underspent their budget for wages. And the flood plant plane vacancy in the planning department will not be backfilled. Rather, that money will be put into um, engineering. For, and will rely on RG for that flood plan work. Do you have something to add to that?
Yes, uh, so thanks, Michelle. So this, again, these are kind of a summary of things that changed from meeting to meeting. So, um, so that we keep track of that. Um, overall, you'll see in clear gov, we're still showing a surplus in the general fund. Uh, so not a lot of, there's some puts and takes here, but we're not, we're not seeing a, a, a significant change. In terms of the bottom line, but I do want to highlight. Uh, Michelle mentioned the, the request from our uh, police department. Uh, they did go through an interview process, that's a pretty robust process, as you can imagine. And we are very excited about the top candidate for that, uh, somebody that's already been through the academy. Um, and brings uh, quite a bit of experience to the team. And so to lock that person, and they already have housing, they're secure here, so to lock that person and Dean is asking if we can go ahead. If the board is in agreement with that increase in the twenty twenty two budget, can we move forward with that hire? Here and by the end of November, so.
And with no budget impact this year.
Right, as Michelle stated, they've been shorthanded for a good portion of the year, they're, they're running under their wages and salaries or wages and benefits. Budget.
And not that, um, it's, it's necessarily a budget thing, but they still have two in the process or three.
Uh, they have two cadets that will wrap up in December, so. Um, they were budgeted.
And they're potentially, tho- those positions are still open for them, am I correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So that, that is one that's specific that we'd like the board's direction on tonight. Uh, the other things are puts and takes, I do want to point out that. Uh, you know, this smart gov platform is something we're very excited about, uh, it. We can jump into it if you'd like to, to hear some more description of that. Uh, Joseph and the planning department had already planned to move into, to a platform like this. And so his budget already reflected about half of this cost. But once we found out what it will do for the other departments. It, it's a clear time saver and, and really increases accuracy with our documentation. Also, it adds online payment for a lot of those functions too, so. Uh, for us, it was a pretty clear um, return on investment for that, so. Um, those were the two main larger ones in this list.
So let's, let's address the uh, proposal for the police department. Trustees, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion that we approve.
Thank you, Cindy.
Second.
Second, Fay, further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lecretzi?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
Trustee Poppy?
Yes.
Thank you all very much and uh, that, that's great, that's great. Anything else, Philip? Okay, anything else, Michelle, before I open it up for public comment? Open this portion of the public hearing, a public comment. I remind you, if you're on chat, you can raise your hand, if you're on your row, your phone, press star nine and we will. Hopefully run you down, find you. Nothing saying anything. I closed this portion of the public hearing, public comment. Uh, trustees, any other clarifying questions? Hearing then, oh, go ahead, yes.
I noticed that on page one nineteen, we continue to have an expense item for recycling. Of fifteen thousand nine hundred fifty dollars, and I know we've lost our community recycler, um, Chabano. And I'm hoping that over time, we will come up with some way to use this budget line item to enable. People to do recycling again.
Are you keeping, go ahead, Philip?
I could speak to that, I'm, I'm glad you brought it up because I, I just attached. The, the document from the county requesting that we hold that in twenty twenty two flat in the reasoning behind that. So it is in clear gov, but I'll go ahead and email it to the board, so you can see that request and what that is going towards. Or what the anticipation is that it would go towards, uh, in conjunction with Garner, I think that they are wanting to. Basically, hold that budget countywide for actual, for the actual implementation of some of the solutions, so. How about, I'll get that information out to the board and then we can follow back up at the next meeting to see if there's any further questions. I can also ask uh, Beth or someone, a representative from the county team to come speak at the next meeting, if you'd like. Specifically on that topic, if you think it's necessary.
I don't know that it's necessary, it'd be interesting, but you're, I'd like to just see what you send out too.
I mean, my first impression is it's a placeholder at this point, um, you know, in other words, you're saying we're working on it. Please hold that, but.
Yeah, I'm glad to see it in there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that was your comment. Glad to see it there. Okay, so I don't necessarily think follow-up is necessary, Philip, but.
Okay. Uh, I'll, I'll share that information.
It's still there and I knew there were some things underlying going on with Garner, so. Any other questions? Okay, um, I would entertain a motion to continue. This public hearing until, Philip, do you got a date? Michelle has one, I know.
Twenty third, November twenty third.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make it, I make a motion to continue this public hearing uh, to November twenty third.
Thank you very much.
I'll second it.
Second, Fay. All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Opposed?
Don't go ahead, finish the vote.
What's that?
Finish the vote, sorry, I didn't jump in there.
We did.
Okay, no, it's finished, okay. Uh, we didn't, I forgot to bring back up the uh, grant request, the no-match grant request from HPC. You all would like to see that added to the budget, it won't change. It's a no, it's a no-match grant, so it's, it's a revenue and expense add to the budget that doesn't change the net. To the general fund, so if you'd like for us to include that, we can.
Let's go ahead and do a motion, entertain it, motion.
I'll make the motion when we include it.
Thank you, Norm.
Second.
Second, Lecretzi. Further discussion. It's a, well, let's go ahead and do a roll call, I'm sorry. But still dollars and cents.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lecretzi?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
Trustee Poppy?
Yes.
Thank you, Philip, I forgot about that one. Um, okay, motion step on the way. Cancellation of the next item is cancellation of board trustees meeting for December twenty first. Oh, excuse me, what date is that, Paula?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth? So are we still having one, the twenty first one?
Nope.
Just thought of it.
We are not unless the twenty twenty two budget is.
I thought we could extend it, never mind. I would entertain a motion.
Make motion to.
I was like.
To cancel uh, the board of trustees meeting scheduled for December twenty eighth.
Thank you. I have a motion.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Ooh, thank you all very much, okay, wow, just like that, it's ninth or. Um, I'm just kidding.
Oh, like, what? What?
Uh, okay, trustee staff interaction. We'll start with Dave.
I got nothing today.
Dave's got nothing.
Nothing.
Did Dean go home? Did you send him on his way?
Oh, there he is.
There's Dean.
I'm here, I don't have anything else to report, I, I do want to thank you for approving that officer position, that's really going to be a big help to us, thank you.
Thanks, Dean.
Well, you got spoken on the block tonight.
You're all, you're all out.
Out of words.
Hey, you, you filled us up, though, it was kind of nice, Joseph.
I guess I'll take Earl's time, I've got a couple of things for you all. Um, first and foremost, uh, just a. Update on the Carbonette Street developments that RFP has been published today, um, for CQ developer partner on that project. Um, so it's a really exciting moment to open that RFP up. Um, and you have three developers at least that are very interested and have said they will be responding. Um, the deadline for response is December twentieth. We're asking applicants to hold uh, the afternoon of January fourth for interviews. So we would anticipate um, sort of that mid-January timeframe for, for bringing forward a recommendation. That's one thing, a quick update on my BV, um, as you all know, it launched last Monday. Um, we have, as of the start of the meeting, I haven't checked again, we have four hundred and ninety-nine folks that have registered on the site. As participants, um, which is super exciting. That means we have four hundred and ninety-nine folks that have actually created an account. And um, over half of those folks have actually engaged, so they've done something on the site. Um, as, as Earl, uh, called out earlier, we have two hundred and five responses on the rodeo ground survey. Um, of those four hundred and ninety-nine folks, four hundred and thirty-one of them are full-time residents. Um, we also have a majority of them that live within town limits and uh, four hundred and thirty-two live within eight, one, two, and one. Um, so we have a really good understanding of who those folks are. We have the ability to blast them with newsletters and information, uh, whether that be general or specific. And we're already seeing really positive feedback, um, you know, from a variety of channels on that website, so. Just want to continue to elevate that as a really important tool, I think, for the town moving forward. Um, narrowing down my last, my last couple here, I wanted to give a quick heads up. That on the December fourteenth, um, we will be needing to notice. The preliminary and final plat for South Main Phase Two. Um, I want to just elevate that as a heads up, this is sort of a, uh, we'll be going before P and Z December first. Um, if P and Z does not recommend approval, it won't, it will fall off the agenda. Um, but given our noticing deadlines, we'll need to notice it for the December fourteenth meeting before P and Z meets. So I just wanted to make sure that you all are aware of that. Um, not to cut you off. But that, that's coming up. Um, and then finally, uh, also you'll probably see on our website in RFP for a, uh. We talked about this last time, for uh, construction manager, general contractor. Um, relation to the police station, uh, somebody that would partner with us through the design phase. And then would also have the opportunity to bid on that final construction project, so. I just want to make you all aware that RFP will be public. Speak yourself.
Great, Roddy and Phil, go ahead, Dave.
Um, connect the PUD discussions, um. Would it be, I request that we have a, I don't know about a pregame, but I mean, that's. To, to digest that much information from Friday to Tuesday would be a big ask, um, for reviewing an entire. PUD approval?
Uh, no, so.
It's not, okay.
It's not a PUD approval, it's, it's a phase two preliminary plat.
Okay, okay, nevermind, okay, yeah, I, I confuse things.
Yep.
Yeah, nevermind.
And this, this particular phase is, is, is pretty small.
Okay. I was confused in terms of, I apologize.
Dave, Dave and confused.
It happens occasionally, yes.
Just saying.
It gets everybody, thank you.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Anything else, Joseph?
No, I'm done.
All right, thank you. Uh, Cindy?
Uh, I wanted to thank Chief Bertram. I live on a busy trick-or-treat street and seeing all the kids with the glow necklaces, good publicity for. The fire department and some of those costumes are pretty dark, so. Yeah, the kids really enjoyed it, thank you.
Thank you for that feedback.
Thank you, Cindy, uh, chief, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, just uh, thank you guys for your support and, you know, always feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions about anything. Um, I put my email on there, uh, feel free to reach out, I'm not truly part of staff, but feel free to reach out to me for any reason, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jeff?
Sorry, I couldn't get the mute, couldn't get the mute button off fast enough, um, I don't have anything for you, um. Everything's going smoothly, you guys are busy, but that's good.
And thank you for your help tonight, Jeff.
Oh, you're welcome, that was a little bit of a tough one, so, um, hopefully that'll work out for everybody.
There you go, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Gina?
Um, the only thing I have is, I, I had a chance to come down here for uh, to meet with NES and the um. For the. Yeah, the rodee grounds, thank you, I'm like, what's the word, um, and I thought it was really well done. I had the chance to speak with them a little bit and just learn a little bit more about the entire area and. Kind of asked a few questions about what was coming in and what people thought and it was just pretty interesting, but. Um, but I thought it was really cool to have the opportunity to speak with them and, you know, a community forum, if anybody could come down, so. Um, but that was, that was really about it.
Thank you. Norm?
Some of my neighbors are wondering why that uh, house on Raymond Lee hasn't done anything with his yard.
Yard in terms of weeds or yard in terms of?
The yard because of the high growth in the weeds. All over the front yard.
It's just one of them.
Anything else?
Oh, and I'm also glad to see that uh, the light project's moving.
Yeah. And they're actually adding some, aren't they? Addings, what do you, uh, um, we're actually taking one away.
Really, okay, so what were they cutting right there by railroad, I thought they were adding something there.
I think they're just replacing.
Oh, they, they have to cut out a bit of the concrete.
Okay, that old, the old poles were just set right in concrete, and so they're having to cut quite a bit out. Which is dragging the project on a little bit longer, but we appreciate it, it needs to get done. There's, there's one that was on Main Street that was right in the middle of an ADA ramp. That had no reason to be there, so we're gonna.
I'm really, I'm positive that they put the lamp post there after the ADA ramp, right?
That, but yeah, we're excited to see that.
Yeah, it is moving right along and. Thank you, Norm, anything else?
No.
Maybe.
Um, I had uh, some neighbors approached me and, and they had very nice things to say about the airport. That, that the staff is just so friendly and courteous and, and just made these people who had flown in here just feel great about being here. They even had driven around in the courtesy car to get it all warmed up for them. So, anyway, that was above and beyond. And then also about the police who had been um, called to a house near mine and there was a mental health issue. And so these neighbors were just saying that the, the police officer who responded was just so gentle and, and wonderful in the situation. So it's just very, very complimentary.
Thank you. Um, Michelle, do you have anything else?
No, I, you woke me up.
I'm sorry. You should know, I'll start calling on you earlier. Devin, do you have anything?
I'm all set, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Devin. Go to bed. Thanks, Devin. Go to bed. Paula?
I just want to share with you, remember a couple of months ago when we all spent a lot of time discussing short-term rentals? And we had the moratorium on the accepting applications. Well, yesterday morning was the morning that people could come and submit their applications. And if any of you drove by Town Hall you saw fourteen people waiting out in line to submit their applications. So yesterday morning, we accepted fifteen new applications. Ten of those were out-of-county residents, two primary residents here in town, and three for non-primary residents. And thirty-four renewal applications. The first person in line when they came in, I said, so what time did you get in line this morning? Five-thirty.
Wow.
And they said that they had plenty of time to meet the other people in line and share conversation. So, yeah. It was a quite an interesting thing to walk up to Town Hall yesterday with a welcoming committee.
Black Friday.
Truly.
They bring you donuts at least?
They didn't bring donuts.
Nobody brought donuts. Oh my. Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Um Philip?
Yes, uh I'll start off uh just really recognizing uh Paula and Lillian and the rest of the staff getting the uh short-term rental process in good order. When people are lined up and they've been there since five-thirty, it's a, it's a little anxious, you know, like, hey, what are we going to get here? But uh they had everything ready um in terms of taking things, taking applications in and super smooth. So that was, that was outstanding work by the staff. The other thing I wanted to bring up was, I sent an email about PAX Eight, which is that um technology company that hires primarily remote remote workforce, and they focus in on rural areas such as ours. And um the EDC is is supportive of them. They are not looking to bring new people into the county to do remote, remote work. They're really trying to recruit workforce from the existing population in rural Colorado. So that's one very clear distinction that the EDC wants to make about that. But um PAX Eight is is very interested in in getting more connected in with our, with BV. They had meetings in Salida a few months ago, if you may remember. And they had a very quick request, hey, can we have a, you know, a a meeting later this week with the board? And it's like, wow, trying to organize that's a little tough within a few days. But um they're reaching back out, and so I sent an email out to the board. Uh trustee Fay expressed interest in hearing more from them. So if anyone else wants to attend, let me know so that I can help coordinate. And if it's more than two trustees, that's okay. We'll just get it posted. Yeah, probably.
That's what I was going to say. If if anybody wants to, then Paula can post it. Uh was there any kind of timeframe set for that?
Uh they didn't give it, give a timeframe. I would imagine before, before middle of December.
But they, but at least they weren't rushing into
No, it wasn't a rush situation this time. So that, uh and then the last thing, uh just kind of recognizing the the, the good conversation, this, the uh public hearing uh related to the marijuana license this evening. You know, I just, it just struck me that um, you know, we, we try to, I think it was Jeff put it, thread the needle. We try to thread the needle with providing uh businesses the as much assurance as they can possibly get. And so, yeah, obviously, we brought forward a, a uh a recommendation for approval, but based on several conditions. And and so they have, they still had a ways to go before uh getting that license. Um so I, I guess that is something that, for instance, Paula and I have to make the judgment call. When do we bring that forward? Um and so if, if you do have feedback for me on that, we are coming up on performance evaluation time. So I'm plugging that too, that we're getting into that time of the year. So just think about it, if there's something you want to share with me about, hey, we'd much rather see things fully, you know, uh baked, if you will. I'm really good at that. But yeah, you know, you get my point. Or or would you rather us kind of operate as we are, where we try to make a good judgment call that has good, solid conditions? But obviously
Take it to a higher level.
Yeah. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
On all night on this one, Ken. And and I think, and I'm speaking for myself, and I appreciate very much the time and effort that staff puts into that to bring it to that point that makes it understandable. And otherwise, we're trying to decipher, look between the lines, what it, you know, here's, here's a process. We've looked at it. We've tried to evaluate it as best we can to hopefully put it on the table so you can see it. Otherwise, we could spend, well, we spent how long on it? We'd spend hours on it, trying to rehash what you've already looked at. It just saves, saves a lot of stuff, a lot of time, a lot of time. Um is, is Joel still on? Is he gone? I didn't know whether anybody had a comment out there.
No.
He's gone. Good. Um I'd have a few comments, not a lot. Uh first of all, I'm very uh proud of staff and this board for approving the land, the RFP going out, and also excited to hear that we have people interested that fast. That's pretty amazing. Uh that's pretty cool. That's kind of what it's all about. I'm very happy to see the IBV. Um I think that's going to go a long ways uh for a lot of the things that you see out on social media. That puts it in perspective. Here's a place to talk and really talk to town if you want to. Um I'm hoping that cup jumps. Really am. And one more time, I want to see you look down at your ankle. Just say it. I mean, that, you know, that's keeping the meeting going. It's really good. Come on, man, I want that cup to move, so. Um otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion adjourned.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Have a good night.